She did indicate that she was.
Yeah, she was in there tonight, but she wasn't going to be next meeting. Well, she worked till five. One, six, twenty-seven.
I was talking to Rick, we called China, get in the door and all of a sudden I'm like, oh crap, I'm sorry. And I looked up and like, oh, uh, which deputy is right in front of me? Let me see. Let me see.
I took the wrong card, left my card and then I had to get in.
Well, then I called Jim after that, I was like, how are we keeping the door open? So I told Marcy to want it at fifteen, because I know it's five twelve, so.
Is it open?
Yeah, yeah, now it's open.
All right, let's go say another check.
Well, that's what I told Jim, I said, I guess if we're having a public hearing, we gotta make sure the doors are closed.
It's gonna be real convenient. We shortened up.
Do we have to let anyone know when I'm gonna lock again, or?
No, um, Marcy and Cassie will check it like tonight.
Are you done? I was on the ride out and I'm gonna sort of. I had several before the night.
Tracy.
I didn't, we were four, we were like seven, somehow, but for a period. Talk about long days of waiting till I got home that day.
Yeah. Well, even afterwards, just driving around in town. Even the ride home sucked.
I remember something.
It's still ringing in my ears. I should act though.
It'll bugs when it, maybe nobody bugs us.
Liza just texted me, said she's on her way, she's stuck behind this little person, she can't pass.
Almost forgot about Dan. I forgot about Dan.
Are you recording, Thomas?
Uh huh.
Okay. All right, five thirty, I'll call this, uh, special meeting on Mercer County Commission order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve.
A motion by Jamie, seconded by Rick to approve the agenda, any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Gene?
Hi.
Although, that motion passes. Okay, we have our public hearing for the, uh, twenty twenty-four final budget. If anybody didn't sign in, when they get there, when you get a chance, could you please sign in? Um, as far as, uh, we'll proceed, um, if you wanna approach, um, we'll give you a few minutes to, uh, let you speak about the budget, um, there'll be no final action today, we still have, um, a couple of regular meetings. I believe our deadline is, uh, fourth of October. Okay, so that would be kind of our plan to incorporate any changes, any, um, requests that we hear from the public, um, and then kind of ongoing, um, review by the commissioners and, and staff, so. With that, um, I'll open it up to the public, um, anybody wanna go first? Come up.
Good evening, Mercer County Commissioner, my name is Darwin Knudsen for the record. First, I wanna thank all of you for giving us a budget without raising our taxes, that's a good thing. We're all pleased with that, and I just wanna point out a couple simple facts about the economy. We've got eighty-two percent of the people in this country living paycheck to paycheck right now. It's very difficult for some of us. And, uh, I'm just asking you folks to keep that in mind, uh, I know there's a, a push to, uh, start an economic development group, and, uh, I just hope, uh, you folks keep that to a, a minimum, and maybe look at some options than, uh, a bunch of meetings, and, uh, but, uh, we've lost thirty percent of our buying power out here. Our wages, pensions, savings have been depleted and given to the fat cats on Wall Street. And, uh, like I said, we're, uh, eighty-two percent of the folks are living ha- uh, hand to hand, paycheck to paycheck. Uh, it's the price of, uh, buying a vehicle for some is almost impossible, the price of, uh, getting into a new home is almost impossible. And those are s- real struggles, uh, a lot of us don't have the options of, uh, you know, increasing the utility rates, or whatever it is to ensure our securities, so just keep us in mind, and thank you for not raising our taxes.
Thanks, Darwin.
Thanks, Darwin.
Anyone else? Marv, come on up.
Hi.
Hi, board members. Remember, sitting there, and even to this day, even with that, I still feel, um, a little nervous in this room. I think you guys do a good job, your hearts are in it, uh, and I think there's some room for, some adjustments, and I'm gonna go through some of those, and it's got to do with the budget, okay? Um, first, I'll go through my question, I'm just gonna walk down the line. There's been some jo- talk about on the budget to put, uh, some money in for the HR per- person. I'd like to know what the justification is for doing that. And, what is not being done that would, that needs to be done that would justify putting, creating a new position in budget for an HR person?
Well, I guess from my perspective, um, with HR, there's been, um, a lot of issues that we've, as the commission, have had to deal with. We've had to have a lot of legal counsel with, um, a lot of it is, is protected because it's HR and HIPAA-related type items. Um, some of those things have been coming up fairly often, um, which is the reason, or at least the thought process, um, to have HR. We don't know if we would do, um, a contract with a third party, or if we'd have an employee, that's still up for discussion. Um, and the time to discuss it is, is a preliminary budget, is it something that we can afford to do? Is it something we should do, and that's, that's why we're taking those steps?
And our present staff isn't able to meet those responsibilities?
In my opinion, no.
Okay. Okay, has there ever been a motion, now, when I was at a meeting, it says, well, I just wanna add sixty-five thousand dollars to the budget for HR person? To me, that's like pork barrel, you know what pork barrel is? It's when you add something to a bill, it's in the back, when you approve the bill, then it automatically gets approved too. So what I'm saying is, if you indeed want to get an HR person, I would like to see it on the agenda, and have it discussed, and a motion and a vote taken to do so, rather than just cart and blank, put some numbers in the budget.
Oh yeah, we got a lot of discussion on that, yeah, so.
Uh, another thing, financial software, is it budgeted?
It's currently budgeted, um, have we officially approved that? Did you approve that at the last meeting?
No, we did.
Okay. I wasn't at the last meeting, so, but they, they approved it, we had it budgeted, um, in this year, we're using the ARPA funds, I believe.
You had it budgeted for this year's, so you approved it last year.
Right.
How much money has been set aside for?
Two hundred and eighty.
Two hundred and eighty thousand?
Yep.
Okay. That's, uh.
That was, I think it was September of twenty-two, I think we found correct on, is that the meeting? I think it was September twenty-two that that two hundred and eighty thousand was addressed.
I wanna applaud you guys for, for getting that done. We promised the state auditor at their last audit that we would do so. Our county's the only one that doesn't have financial software that works, and their reports don't merge, we can't follow one to the other. So, I hope you put it at the top of your list of importance. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the general budget, uh, nothing's listed for delinquent taxes. Can you guys explain why we cho- why it was chosen not to add anything for delinquent taxes? Cause I did a study on this here with the treasurer a few years ago, and I think that's on page five, I'm not sure. I'll have a copy of that right in front of me. Typically, it's five to six percent of delinquent taxes, that's basically an expense, and there's nothing in the line item for that, can I ask you why?
I know it's not in the general, it's not in a few other ones, there's, some in there for unorganized roads, um, as far as delinquent taxes, there's another one in aid to secondary.
I'm talking general fund.
Um, the, the commission wasn't the one that took that out.
But you guys have the authority to, before you approve the preliminary budget, whoa, wait a minute, we're missing something.
Mm-hmm.
So.
We talked about it before the preliminary, but, um, nothing was added before the preliminary was approved.
Your intent to add something there? And we're gonna leave it?
Well, yeah, we'll have to consider it.
Thank you, that's all I'm asking, is for you guys to consider it. Um, the fees from county offices went up from eight, went up about eighty thousand dollars, again, on page five. That's revenue. Ken, how did those fees, how did we justify that increase in revenue?
Okay, what was the line?
I don't have the line in front of me, it's on page five, county offices.
Fees, fees.
You know, when I went through this and did the estimates for twenty-four, what I'm looking at is the actual numbers in twenty-two. Then I went and looked in the revenue book, and I saw what we had collected so far, and I kinda made an estimate from that. And that's where I got an estimate of twenty twenty-four.
Is your question?
Actually, let's look on page five, the very top line.
Yes.
And that's what I'm looking.
The revenues for twenty twenty-three was eighty thousand dollars.
That was the estimate.
Right, for twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
For twenty twenty-four, our estimate has doubled that.
Yes, because what I was doing, I was looking at twenty twenty-two, which we actually got a hundred and forty thousand.
Correct.
And then you look, and then I look in the revenue book of what we've got so far, cause I didn't change Sam's estimates in there. But what I saw, that we were gonna make close to a hundred and sixty, cause of what we've already got.
Okay. Just wanna know the thought processes in some of these, because doubling it, it jumps out.
Look at what we got in twenty-two, I didn't double it, you know what I mean?
But it appeared that, it appeared that something happened, that it was gonna go down, now it's back up again, so there, that's why I asked the question. Okay. Next line item. Government reimbursement, it's up ninety thousand dollars.
What page am I on?
Page five again.
Oh, federal government?
Mm-hmm.
That's what we're estimating for reimbursement from the federal prisoner program.
Thank you. Prisoner program.
Yes, inmate reimbursement. And I did work with, um, the sheriff on it.
Well, I'm glad to see that that's in there, and that answers another couple of the spots. Oliver County reimbursement, I believe I know the answer to that, but I would like you guys to tell me, it's up thirty thousand, it used to be forty?
Thirty thousand is the nine-one side of it, we made an agreement with them, that now they would just get, pay us thirty thousand, and that would be added to the seventy thousand, or to the forty thousand dispatch.
Okay.
That's just a flat rate now, instead of just the hourly, what it was before.
Okay. BLM money, Bureau of Land Management is down seventy thousand.
That, I went strictly by the numbers.
Gene, you look like you're looking for my.
I got the wrong budget in front of me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm looking for.
Well, let's get you the right one.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I'm, I've been digging for it here.
Just so we all get to.
Scrabbling.
Discussing the same thing, otherwise you look at me with a confused, like, what's he talking about?
Okay, now I got one that says twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, so I'm looking at Bureau of Land Management, it's towards the bottom, it's up thirty thousand, I think? No, it's down seventy thousand.
Yeah, I, I, I looked at the hard numbers, and then I looked at what we'd received up to that point, cause remember, it was like June, July? So I got halfway through the year, and I estimated.
Okay, one thing.
Tried to estimate low.
Well, sometimes it's better to estimate low.
You're, sorry, you're looking at B L, B L M monies?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, one thing, years past, the county was receiving money in excess of what we were supposed to be receiving. So they quit paying us for a period of time, two and a half years, I think it was. So one year when they started paying it, I think that was last year, they only paid for like half a year, so, that might have shown me that it probably should have been a little bit lower, but we're back to, normal revenue receipts on that now. Okay, I'm not sure if you were, uh, speaking on that, yeah, we lost it for about two and a half years. You guys are all aware of that, right?
Yep.
Okay, health insurance transfers, a hundred and fifty K, I think I know that, but you can tell it to me.
Okay, well, that's what they transfer in, actually, that money will be for, um, there's funds sitting there that belong to the employees. So for one year, we're paying the whole health insurance, because those monies were sitting there when we used to have our own self, uh, insurance, before we went to.
So the health insurance fund had a seventy grand in it?
It had a hundred and fifty thousand that was actually the employees' funds that we put in there.
Okay.
And it needs to go, it's been sitting there for a long time, and now it's done, it was there because of, uh, people having their, uh,
Gene?
That's, um, preliminary, yes.
Is that the employees' contribution?
It is, the R ten percent. No.
Cause we went from self-insured to, through, uh, the state purse, or Sanford, Sanford.
That's, that can be, just understand, this isn't final.
I get that, but, I mean, so now the employees don't pay anything.
Just for one year, for a hundred, it was ten percent of what was sitting there, cause when you're self-insured, you have to leave that money there to cover certain portion of all the medical expenses.
I'm a little aware of that.
But then after so many years, then it's just been sitting there, so now it's time to give that ten percent back to the employees. If the commission decides to do that, but that was something that Don. Well.
What are you, what are you asking, or, or stating?
Can you come, can you come forward to ask a question?
But we're not in that self-funded plan anymore.
When a special fund is created, and the monies are put in that, that fund, when? I would have to read the state statute on it, so I can't quote the state statute, I can just paraphrase. When everything that that money was set aside for has been met, and there's no longer a need for that money, the commission can designate that money to wherever they want. It doesn't have to be anything, we, I'll use the word "we." We as a commission can even just put that money in the general fund.
Rephrase that real well.
We're, we're not giving it back, we're, if we do it, it would be in lieu of them paying the normal ten percent.
I hear you.
That's giving, that's giving some of it back.
Without cutting a check, yeah.
Also understand, this isn't a final budget.
Okay.
So, we appreciate your input, I get it, understood.
So do we.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, the Director of Tax Equalization is up a hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Is that a different page?
Sorry, what did you say?
Director of Tax Equalization, I don't have the page number on that.
A hundred thousand?
Hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Okay, that was for the Vanguard. We discussed that with Cindy.
Oh, are you on page, probably page six, next page, I'm assuming it's like.
I didn't write the page up in my notebook.
Oh, I see it now.
Yep.
Okay, so that had to do with paying Vanguard for their, uh, assessments?
Well, Vanguard, when we signed the agreement, we were gonna, it's like a four hundred thousand expense to get us a total in Vanguard through the county, and that was where we set aside a hundred thousand this year in the budget, in her budget for them. And that's why it's up.
Did we sign that agreement already?
No, we did not.
Okay, all right, please, yeah, make sure the, yeah, we have not, that has not been said, yet.
Say that, just that we had put it in.
So Vanguard did, during our county assessment, is that what this is for?
Well, they do part of it now, but if we sign the contract, then they'd be doing the whole county. Cindy says makes fair and equitable across the board.
We, we have two systems, she does a hand for a large portion of the rural part of the county, and then, um, Hazen and Bueller on Vanguard, and, I think there's another portion, I just can't recall offhand, but we have two systems, we're trying to get to one system, and it.
So it'd be more equal across the whole county?
Gotcha.
Yep.
Standardizing.
Standardizing, yep.
Okay. Uh, the next one has to do with the special vehicle fund, special vehicle fund is Fund twenty-one, twenty-two. I'm curious why we are continuing to use that fund. The reason I'm curious is because the sheriff has three line items in his budget, in his expense budget. His expense budget is, uh, is General Fund thousand one, account four-two, one-one-oh. And he has three line items in there that aren't being used. One is line item six-five-two, which is titled lease purchase of equipment, or line six-six-one, it's his new vehicles, or line six-six-two is for future vehicle purchases. So why do we have a special fund for outside of the general fund, when all the sheriff's expenses are supposed to all be grouped together? Do we need to continue that practice? To me, the answer is no, move it into the sheriff's expense line items, where there's already some line items mentioned for them.
Do you happen to know which page you're referencing, Marv?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
Ah, that's why it's taking me so long, sorry.
But I, but I believe when Terry initially, when we met with department heads, it was part of this transmittal budgets sheet, but then when this came out, it was moved to the special vehicle fund, because I remember asking about it, what it was.
It's a special vehicle fund, so he can put money aside and then hold it.
Right, but I, his funds now in the general fund, they are not, you know, he uses them, and then after the end of the year, if there's anything left over, it goes into the general fund. The special fund allows him to hold monies to put aside for his vehicles.
And I, I think that was, the purpose of that is like, currently, they're having a lot of trouble getting the vehicles to even come in, so even though they've ordered them, they haven't shown up for the last year, and they're now backlogged, so that would have had to be, put in the general fund, so instead it's put in here, so it's specifically saved for those vehicles.
So your special vehicle fund is just a holding account?
It is, like an equipment fund.
Okay, when we get to the road department, we're gonna talk about that again, cause that's, that's not a bad idea, what you guys, how that works, okay? I'm, I'm at the next question, that is the road department. We budgeted four hundred and ten thousand for new equipment in twenty twenty-three, and I believe again in twenty twenty-four, on the road department. And that, I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have that page.
That's okay.
You know, it's not really, I shouldn't have been working there, but.
It's probably page ten.
Yeah. Ten?
So, what I'm saying is, if you're doing, having a holding fund, so we can accrue money towards special vehicles, I think if that's a really good idea for the sheriff, I think that would be a really good idea for the road department. Cause if we put four hundred and forty-one thousand there in twenty twenty-three, and we don't spend it all, what happens to the balance?
Carries over.
Carries over to what?
Next year.
Because the road department's in a different.
Yeah.
If it carries over, Gene, then so does the sheriff's vehicle money carry over.
But the sheriff's under the general fund, and the road department's in a separate fund, correct?
Right, yep.
That's how I.
And it's.
And it's how I.
Only road fund is a balanced fund.
So I think that's why we have to do the sheriff's department that way, cause they're actually stuck in with the general fund.
Okay.
And it would have to roll into the whole general fund, as opposed to staying in the sheriff's department.
Yeah, but that was a very, very good answer, thank you. Very specific question, is the monies that aren't being used for equipment in twenty twenty-three gonna be carried over under the same line item for twenty twenty-four and years going forward?
They have a balance for it.
Yep, and the road department you're talking specifically, correct?
I'm talking about the equipment, new equipment line.
As far as I know, it does.
Okay.
Unless something changed.
Thing is, it's still in the cash carryover.
Yeah, it's, it's in the total amount.
It's in the budget, it's in the amount.
Yeah.
But no cash is transferred, so the cash balance that you have in your road department is where that money is.
Probably go either way with that statement, you could say, yeah, it carried over into the, into that, it, it carried over into the road fund.
Right. Okay, but.
But you're asking if it stayed in the specific line?
Yes.
No.
We set so much money aside every year to cover all future expenses, and we needed a little bit extra every year to, because of expenses are going up, and to catch up. So, is there any way that you guys can do this, so that the money in that equipment line item, that line, gets carried over towards the equipment line each successive year? That's what I'm asking you to look at.
Okay.
I think we should look in, yeah, I think we should look into that.
I understand what you're saying.
At least we've done that for the building and grounds.
I think that's part of the fund.
That has its own fund, right?
We don't wanna lose that money that we're accruing, right?
Right.
Correct.
Yep.
Wouldn't it be something like a nine-one-one equipment pump?
It is.
From the road to the.
Yep.
Okay. Next one, change subject quite a bit, is the airport road going to get paved this year?
It was in.
It's on our project, just the answer is, are we going to pave that this year, or is that?
It won't, it won't happen.
Pardon me?
I.
I mean, they can't get it paved this year, but are you talking about, will it be in the budget so that it could happen next year?
No, it's in the budget, so it can be done this year, I'm asking, is it going to occur?
I have not heard anything on that one.
I haven't either.
I'm gonna.
From the engineers?
Say, no, it won't happen this year.
Okay, here's where I'm at.
And I don't have a answer, if you're gonna ask why, I don't have that answer.
I wanna ask you that.
Okay.
Kind of, I will. We received over seven million dollars in COVID, ARPA, and period on funds, in the last three years. And I sent a letter to the auditor, and I said, I wanna know where that money's been spent, where we're going to plan to spend it, and get me a list. And I said, I don't need it, whenever you have time, so there's no, no pressure on that, so I wanna know that. To me, us commissioners, or you commissioners, I'm sorry, I'm not a commissioner, should know that, we should be able to pull it up. Oh, what is it, pull those up and say, this is how much is left. So anyhow, two years ago, we asked for the, I asked for that airport road to get paved. We received all this non-normal revenue, excessive, excessive revenue. What are we doing to improve our county? That road is so rough, and we had complaints from the ambulance department. We're transporting critical people with critical equipment on a washboardy road to the airport. And there's stuff bouncing and jiggling on the sides of the ambulance.
I would have to look at the road. I think that is in the budget for next year, on the, in the road department.
We just pulled it up.
That's what I was fumbling through, cause we have projects.
This year, right?
For, it's gonna be done, I think, in twenty twenty-four.
The, it's in the budget for this. The, it's in the budget for this year, Jean. Last year's budget, twenty-twenty-two, we did eighty-five thousand, supposedly it got spent for the study. And the airport agreed to give us additional land for right away to get that road done. The stuff was moving forward, and someplace it got stopped. So I'm gonna ask you guys, please, that you pursue that. We have over seven million dollars that we received in excess of funds that, from normal revenue, that would be, it's probably only a million dollar project. A great way to improve our county, and take advantage of those monies that were given to us. Curry Dogg alone was two and a half million dollars, okay? That's all I've got on that page. Now, see if I can do this, I'm not sure that I can, but we're gonna try. I'm gonna go into the budget now, these all were budget items, but I'm gonna go about the budget that, preliminary budget that has been approved. I've been doing some homework on it, and I've found some errors. What appears to be material errors, material means they're important, that's the accounting term for that. So, I'm gonna bring up some of those errors as I see them, and I'd like you guys to evaluate them, and see if there's every, any merit to them, and if there is, if there isn't, you can tell me, that don't hurt my feelings, but if there is, let's get them corrected. I'm referencing page eight of the approved budget, okay? See if I can get there. From what I see, if you look on there, towards the bottom of the first column, it says balance January one, twenty-twenty-two. There's a number of two-point-two million dollars here, right? You guys with me? At the very bottom of the page, December thirty-first, there's a value of two-point-nine million dollars. It appears, when you look at the trial balance, which I have received, that those numbers are inverted, they should be swapped, boom. It's an error. I want you guys to look at that, because the end of twenty-twenty-two, instead of being two-point-nine million, is two-point-two. Tw- end of twenty-twenty-two tells us what's gonna be left in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three tells us how much to budget for in twenty-twenty-four. So I see those two numbers being wrong. When you change those numbers, the difference is about six-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. This material, that needs to be checked. Okay, let's go to page ten. That's County Roads, I believe, yep, County Road Fund, same thing. It appears the wrong numbers were entered on those dates, now go to your trial balance.
Page nine is one that she did a correction on, so that's an extra sheet.
Okay, the thing is, though, on the county road, and you're talking at the bottom with the three-ten in the negative, right, three-hundred-and-ten thousand?
The three-ten on the negative should be on the balance of January one, and the one-one-nine-five-seventy-two should be down where the three-ten is. And I want you guys to look at the official county trial balance, I do not want you to look at the prepared spreadsheet. The reason I'm saying that is because, this is another reason we need that financial software. Our official county records come off of a computer, and they're saved, nothing can be changed. The, I want you, when you look at those numbers, look at the official county trial balance report. I have it with me. And I can show you the end of the years, the numbers that, why that they're inverted. When you, if, when you correct those two numbers, and you walk all the way through here, I'll just give an example, this here's my own math, you guys can double-check it. At the, at the balance of December thirty-first, there are six-hundred, what's listed is six-hundred-and-fifty thousand, basically. If you carry it through there, it's over four million dollars.
But Marvin, we did check them, and that was right, we went into the new year, went to twenty-three, in the negative, a three-hundred-and-ten thousand.
I understand that, it's on the wrong, Carmen, it's on the wrong line. At the end of, the three-hundred-and-ten thousand is negative, I, I'm not arguing that point.
No.
And if you look at balance of January one, twenty-twenty-two, those two numbers need to be.
January one, twenty-twenty-two, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Just a second, I'll see if I can find it in the trial balance.
That's the date on the three-ten in the negative, and it went into the new year of twenty-twenty-three as a negative.
Give me a second, please.
And it didn't get corrected until after February fifteenth meeting.
I got that, I understand that. I'll pull it up here, just give me one second, please. I have the official trial balance here.
And now this what we went off of.
This is Fund Twenty-One, Forty. Okay, do you mind if I approach? These are all clipped together, so I'll be very fragile, so I don't, all over the place. Okay, I'm gonna come up there. Show it to Carmen.
Well, and that is what we went off of.
Okay.
And I believe Gwen's got it too.
Twenty-One, Forty. Fun balance, end of the year is eleven-ninety-five.
In twenty-three.
No, that's one-three of twenty-three, so that's, that's the end of twenty-twenty-two.
Right, right.
So the end of twenty-twenty-two, this is the number at the end of the fund.
What I understand, cash on hand, is what we're looking at.
That's what, that's the beginning of the year of twenty-twenty-two.
Then it's just your, you look at it differently then, we do, and I believe Gwen also agrees with me. And that is what I understand of this, so we have a disagreement.
Okay, I'll show it to you a couple of word numbers, and you guys will understand.
You guys go ahead.
You guys familiar with the trial balance?
No.
Okay, you should be.
Can we just gather?
Believe it, you should.
Can we all stand?
Yeah, I'm running over here. We can do this in one quick session. I can do this with the other board too, here's Twenty-One, Forty, right here. This is one-three of twenty-three, so this is end of.
Twenty-two.
End of twenty-twenty-two. Okay? Twenty-twenty-two, the beginning is cash on hand, you have that much money. You have this much revenue, you have this much expense. Fun balance, end of twenty-twenty-two says eleven-ninety-five. That's what this said. What's it say on your sheet?
End of which one?
End of twenty-twenty-two, Twenty-One, Forty.
Just looks like the beginning, this one.
You have that number. And that's supposed to be on.
Balance December, you should have a twenty-twenty-two at the, behind this.
And, and it doesn't.
It doesn't need to, because this is your twenty-twenty-two, now it's December thirty-first, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, you don't need to do that.
Where did you get?
Then this, those come off that.
Yes.
But the thing is, then, Marvin, how can you explain the January first of, of twenty-three starts at a negative three-ten?
That's because you, that's because you've got the wrong numbers here, Carmen.
No, it was a negative three-ten, because it didn't get corrected until February, and it proved that those funds did not get switched over there. When we went into the new year, it was in a negative of three-hundred-and-ten thousand, and then they did an amendment.
Okay, okay, here's what I'm gonna do with that, I'm not gonna argue the point, I'll let you guys.
I'm not arguing, I'm just disagreeing with you guys.
You can, I appreciate that, that's how we get things fixed, corrected. This is the official report, if I'm reading this wrong, you guys show me, if I'm reading it right, fix your budgets. All okay, good?
Okay.
Okay.
Should get this every single month.
Actually, you guys do get it every single month, in that report that's yellow. That shows you, and that is exactly where all those come from, absolutely.
You get it on the spreadsheet, if you guys would get good tax and financial software, Carmen would be more free to do her job, instead of typing it in spreadsheets. Because it would be accurate, you need that tax and financial software. All this extra work that the accountants are having to do, and read reports, and type it over here, and type it over there, make sure everything's on, that can go away.
And I do wish it had gone through in seventeen and eighteen, when it was first addressed, there just wasn't the money there, it was canceled, so, that's unfortunate.
I just wanna keep pressing the point. I've been doing, I've been doing it for five years. Okay, that's page ten, um, that's page eight, page ten, County Roads. Same thing.
So that's the one we just did, were you saying though, page eight has the same thing on it, Marvin?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, eight, ten, ten.
We were just on.
We were just on ten.
Yep.
And there also, there also, I'm sorry.
What page you on now? What page you on now?
I'm, I think I've done with my pages.
Okay.
I can wrap this up, Jean, can you believe it? So I'm saying that it appears there's some material errors on the preliminary budget. And they need to be corrected. Uh, township roads, agency secondary roads also have errors. These are the only funds, so I looked at the general fund and the road funds, that's as far as I got. And I probably spent almost as much time on this, this is a dangerous statement, I'm not gonna make it.
Good choice.
Okay.
Spend some time on that, there's three reports that I would get from the county auditor every single month, and Josh Gallion, his office, not him, his office told me, as a commissioner, I should get those reports every single month. And his main account, one of his main accountants told me, he says, Marvin, you need, your gospel is your trial balance. You need to know that, and how it works, and I think I do. Marvin, I don't have anything else for you guys. I would not approve this budget until all those line items are answered. That's my opinion. And I'm not arguing with Carmen, they did a lot of work on this. Now, another thing, someplace, somewhere, the state auditor gave us this budget form. In the olden days, we had a, a different form that was really skeptical about how, how you would read it. And I took that to the state, and they came back, and they gave us this budget form that Carmen's using today, they gave it to us.
It's on the Dacko's page, yeah.
It's been modified, the one that Carmen's using has been modified. When you do, when, it's a real long spreadsheet, you can go through, all the way through this, and you get down with a number, if it belongs on page eight, you can tell it to go to page nine, look in line six, and it'll pull that number over, you're familiar with that, right?
Mm-hmm, I've looked at it.
Okay? Sometimes, in this budget that she's using now, that's not occurring, somebody took the formula out and typed in a hard number. Now you're reusing the formula, so the form has been modified. Because it may not have been understood, or because of time, who knows, but it doesn't appear that, and I have a copy of the one, well, you got it, it's on the Dacko website, you said, right?
I saw it on the Dacko's website, yes.
Great, so we did gain, we got a good working form, let's double-check that, that's all I have, I would not approve this budget.
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you, Marvin.
No, I do appreciate you looking through that, because we did find errors, and we made corrections, and the ones I gave you, you guys got, and I do appreciate that. More eyes, the better, and we've got Dawn and Gwen, and we're always looking at this budget, nobody says, you know, we, it's not perfect, but the more eyes we got on this, the more things were checked in, the better it'll be.
Okay, one thing I want to add to that. Every time I call the treasurer or the auditor's office and ask for a document this last year, or the last, yeah, the last year, I get it. What's your question, Marvin, we'll research that, and see if we can get to the bottom, we're gonna walk through it and get it fixed. Thank you guys for being open-minded and taking time to listen to me.
Appreciate all that you gave us, Marvin, it's good.
Marvin.
Anyone else? Come on.
I, I just have a question, due to the discrepancies, if you wanna call them, and inaccuracies in the budget, will we have another public hearing? Because, I mean, what we're looking at is, could be useless.
Well, as far as how the budget works, is that, once we've set the plenary, we can't go higher, we can always go lower. Um, as far as public hearings, we're mandated to have the one, if we want to have another, that would be up to the discretion of the board. We can't decide that tonight, because we can't take care of any official business, because the only thing we have on the agenda is the public hearing. Um, but it should be something we discuss probably at our next meeting, and that's a great question, so.
And from what I understand, you are hoping that we do?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure I understood that correctly.
Well, I would hope the public would too, I mean, you know, you guys have a lot of responsibilities with your jobs, reviewing those reports every month and whatnot. The public doesn't get to see those, so they're counting on you elected officials to make those decisions for them, and get the right data to do so. And then, and then, of course, they're gonna ask questions if they don't like it, right?
Yep.
But questions are good.
That's a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Come on.
Evening. According to the Hazen Star, uh, Hazen and Buella Economic Development is coming to ask for money, and I have been hearing that you guys are going to probably try to give them money, and I'm wondering, under, you know, Stanton already has four mills appropriated for JDA, JDA Economic Development, potato, potato, tomato, tomato. I don't wanna be double taxed to support a business going to Hazen or Buella, uh, when Stanton already has its own JDA four-mill levy. Another thing, from doing a little research, North Dakota Century Code and Attorney General's opinions, um, does Mercer County have a contract with Mercer County Economic Development?
Contract as far as, well, what?
Contract for services, contract, any kind of a contract with Mercer County.
Well, it's been, it's been an entity with, under the county umbrella since nineteen-eighty-six, as far as a contract, I, I'm not aware of one, but it's been an entity for nearly forty years.
Okay.
And up until recently, they've been self-funded, because they owned property and did leases, those leases are ending at the end of October, I believe. And that's why they've, um, requested.
And it, because at least the question, if you don't have a contract, unless there's a specific clause in the North Dakota Century Code for you to donate money to Mercer County Economic Development, you don't really have a right to.
Well, typically the.
Or see if they run that by Mr. Schultz, but.
Yeah, we call it allocations, but, um, I mean, there's several entities, uh, the one that comes to mind is the Fair Board. Um, the Fair Board used to get a mill levy, and then that went away in, I wanna say like twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen timeframe, and then they've received an allocation since then.
Specifically allowed in the North Dakota Century Code, seeing JDA funds are specifically allowed by the North Dakota Gen, Century Code. So I'm just worrying about the donation to Mercer County Economic Development, which is not a JDA, or is it a JDA? Nobody seems to have a clear answer on that. So I'm just, also, I, I don't wanna pay double taxes to watch two other cities get bigger, richer, et cetera.
Let me see if I can ask this question correct.
Sure.
Are you saying that the North Dakota Century Code allows for us to make a, to give funds to the Mercer County Fair Board?
As far as I know, it's under the section for taxation for mill levers.
Okay. Not what I'm not. That one, I'm not, gonna make me look up another one now.
You can verify that one with Mr. Schultz. So I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Casey White. Um, I just, I guess I'd like to get a little summary of just how things have gone in the past, as compared to how they went this evening. And I see several improvements that have been made over the years, and I'd just like to express my appreciation for that. In the past, this meeting was always held at the last minute, a lot of times tomorrow morning, this budget was approved. There was no consideration for public input into the budget. Now it's three weeks ahead of time, you have multiple, ample time to look through it and review it. Something that I still have a little bit of a concern with, though, is how much information is actually shared with the public. And I know in the past, uh, people have had trouble getting copies and doing different things. But is there any way we can incorporate into a projector and just, when somebody is at the microphone, or somebody making a comment about a certain line item, to where we can just show that? And that way, the people that do take the time to come here and show their concerns can at least follow along more accurately.
That's a good idea.
That's a great idea, thank you.
And once again, thanks for making drastic improvements from the way this was handled in the past. And no increases.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Personally, I would like to have, like, a work session meeting of, open to the public, but I would like to go line for line through this budget, just because questions were limited at the time, and we have transmitted, I personally, as my first budget, I would like to do that, so.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have meetings. But I don't even think we can address a future meeting right here.
No.
It'd have to be your next, maybe on twenty.
We are going to have several meetings, yeah, on the budget.
Marv?
Yes.
You cannot address it this meeting possibly, but anybody determined or a majority of the board can call a special meeting tomorrow if you want.
Yes, we know.
Um, just one reminder, if you didn't sign in when you got here, uh, before you leave, could you send the clipboard up there? Um, I'm gonna say, is anyone else like to, like to speak? Come on.
We, we're all having a lot of talk about expenditures, and I'd just like to stress the importance of cutting costs. Now, I'm sure some of you are familiar with the Six Sigma program, and that's a very good program to be looking at, and with the cost of things going up as drastically as they have in our recent history here, and for the foreseeable future, just a little bit of a change in an operation can save a whole lot of money. For instance, I was on a project up in Canada for a, took a Quebec Canadian outfit, and with all my time on hand as a quality assurance coordinator, up in the mountains, the longest spare time I took on the payroll. Well, besides them giving me a computer in French, and I had to get a French-English dictionary, I made a suggestion by the IT guy that just add me a simple button on that computer screen to where I didn't have to put in all the information for the names and the crafts, and some, you know, the, the, this, the repetitive information for the payroll. All I had to do was go in and verify the hours. And it cut the, uh, time that it took to do that weekly payroll, uh, by forty percent. And this was something that, uh, they adopted across the whole company. And they're the third largest hydro company in the world, so. It's a very big cost saving for just adding one little button on that computer screen. So, it's those kind of, of little, um, informative ideas that could be, you know, taken to our road crew, the sheriff's department, or other departments, and, uh, you know, have people just sit down and, and, and reevaluate the way they do things, and maybe just a little step can save a lot of money. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Darren.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Final time, anyone else? Okay, appreciate everybody coming out. I hope you appreciate that we did it in the evening, hopefully it worked better with people's schedules. With that, that's the only thing we have on the agenda. Um, our next meeting, regular scheduled meeting is the twentieth, unless we have a special meeting before then, so. Thank you, everybody, this meeting is adjourned.